Planning and zoning commission meeting to order. If everybody could take their seats at this time. So the regular planning and zoning commission meeting would come to order at this time. Member Richardson, did you have something, sir?
No.
Before we get started, okay. Let's pledge allegiance at the flag at this time. A roll call, please.
Chairman Severs.
President.
Vice Chairman Spideau. Secretary Richardson.
President.
Member Grant.
Present.
Member Rice.
Here.
Member Porter.
Here.
Alternate member Riley.
Here.
Alternate member Childs.
Present.
Member Riley, you'll be serving as a voting member tonight, this, tonight's meeting. The next item on the, we have certainly have a quorum. Next item is approval of the minutes of May 5th. Do we have any additions, corrections, or motion to approve? Member Richardson.
I would move that we approve the minutes, but I would like to point out something that I'd said in the other meeting was incorrect. If you look on the bottom of page nine, we accepted the Sierra Club percentages from the table provided in Mrs. Spar's handout for section two, section thirty dash thirty-one dash five, and it was unanimous. I said it was five to two, it was unanimous.
So is that a correction?
Just correcting my comment.
Oh, okay, all right. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
All right, roll call, please.
Member Riley.
Yes.
Member Grant.
Yes.
Member Porter.
Yes.
Secretary Richardson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Spideau.
Yes.
Vice, uh, member Rice.
Yes.
Chairman Severs.
Yes.
Okay, there are no quasi judicial items on our agenda, so we will not be reading those rules. There's no consent agenda items under old business tree protection ordinance. I will move that to the end of new business. If we do have any comments, certainly we do not plan on taking any action on that item at this time. The new business items have been advertised for public hearing. So the first item is nine A. The draft version vision based comprehensive plan. I would like to pass out to the planning and zoning commission an email I did send to Peggy Busaka, Scott Larisse, Richard Broome, Mr. Parrish, and Dan Diesel. Reference was the comprehensive plan. And all of you can have a copy of it if you would like. And I really was making these comments because of my concern for the commission, not myself personally. I indicated upon reading the Thursday Florida Today newspaper, I saw the legal ad including a public hearing for transmittal of the 2040 comprehensive plan before planning and zoning commission set for May 19th and city council set for May the 25th. As you know, we are in the middle of reviewing a draft tree ordinance and scheduling the continuation of that discussion for the 19th. During the month of April, we canceled one meeting for a lack of agenda items and during the second meeting only had one item. In the past, we have asked on more than one occasion that agenda items not be said. So we have only one meeting to make a recommendation. That's a recommendation to the city council. We have two, two new members that have not seen or reviewed the plan as members of planning and zoning commission, and the plan is of utmost importance to the city. The council reviewed a draft of the plan in January and that item could have been scheduled for March or April. At our Wednesday night meeting, no one on staff mentioned this item for public hearing. As a matter of professional courtesy to our members, this should have been mentioned because it could have been, it could have impacted the review schedule of the tree ordinance. Please reconsider your schedule. So I, since I wrote that, I thought I needed to furnish you with a copy of that. I did meet with Mr. Parrish, went over the updated comprehensive plan, and I appreciate meeting with him about it. Mr. Parrish, you have a staff presentation?
I do, and it's a much more consolidated presentation than the commissioner saw before. However, for some of the couple of members who have not been part of this process before, this will be via a very superficial level explanation of this comprehensive plan project.
Let me ask, city attorney, did you have something?
Yeah.
Your light's on, that's why I asked.
I didn't put it on, sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
So this, this project started in 2017 as part of the year, which is an evaluation appraisal report process that started at that time that we were obligated to complete, which is a statutory requirement of updating our comprehensive plan every seven years. We did that, we completed it the next year, but this project started, continued on, and it was basically a complete reevaluation of our comprehensive plan and the policies there and kind of trying to find a way to come up with something that meets our needs versus the current comprehensive plan that we have. I'm not going to get into it very much detail. I am available after this meeting or anytime afterwards to speak with you individually by Zoom, by phone, or in person. I'll try and make myself as available as easily as possible to your convenience to answer any questions about this project because it is pretty significant. We will ask for a recommendation, up or down vote tonight, hopefully. If you do not or aren't able to do that, then obviously you can continue it to the next meeting. We will certainly make that, bring that information to city council for them to make a, a call as to whether they would like to go table as well. There is not a deadline on this. This is not meeting any kind of statutory requirement. So the, the comprehensive plan is completely restructured versus what you saw before, what you have, what we have currently adopted. And it primarily was a response to a growth in the city that we saw in 2018. And I just want to tell you that the Bieber is a organization out of the University of Florida that, that we have to rely on for any comprehensive planning requirements such a, and they, they publish low, medium, and high population estimates for all the communities in Florida. And we've always been at a 1% growth rate historically, and that's between the low and the medium growth rates of Bieber. But the last couple of years, and we just, we were looking at this yesterday. We have so many projects in the pipeline now that are coming through and that we believe that we're going to be coming up to that medium estimate, population estimate, which is pretty significant, which means that by 2040, which is the timeframe for this comprehensive plan, we could see a population of about 66,000 people. The main issues that this comprehensive plan is, is trying to address is population growth, of course. How do we protect and steer growth away from a marginal or environmentally sensitive lands? Dealing with exclusionary zoning, if possible, allowing for mixed use districts. Dealing with the fact that we have a lot of retail vacancy and a lot of property that has retail zoning on it that's not utilized. And a high parking standards compared to many other communities and very stringent setback requirements compared to other communities. We had a consultant help us draft many parts of this draft comprehensive plan. They came to you a couple of years ago during our workshops and presented concept of place making, trying to come up with a community and part, areas of a community that are memorable, and there are many ways to do that. And so many of the policies and goals, objectives, and policies throughout this comprehensive plan and the land use categories try to address that. One major component that you'll see throughout this plan is the integration between land use and transportation, that they are not mutually exclusive. They are tied together, and that is half the plan. The first half of this plan is all about land use and transportation and how they interact with each other and how they impact each other. We've consolidated several of the land use categories into eight, including an overlay. We've included a maximum allowable density map. So what that does is it freezes the density on many of the residential land use categories. That was a big concern of this commission past couple of years. So for example, a land use category that has a maximum density of five units per acre is not being increased, it's just being frozen. And so if they want to, if a property owner wants to increase the density on a particular property, they still have to go through the comprehensive plan amendment process that we currently have. And that does require public hearings. The transportation level of service has not changed, but we did add many other things that are related to transportation, such as we've revised or renamed the whole transportation element to a mobility element. So it's not about just roadway capacity, it's also about trails, sidewalks, pedestrian accommodation. It even includes a statement about golf carts and transit, enhanced transit areas. So we have numerous new policies that are multimodal related policies. So the whole transportation element has been expanded completely. We've added many more policies related to complete streets. We've added block perimeters policies that were not in the current comp plan but are now in the new one, primarily related for downtown. And we added many statements in there about access management policies. And so hopefully we'll be, if this is adopted, that we'll have a work program that we can go forward and look at our access management policies inside, or requirements inside our code. The housing element was expanded and includes many new statements about historic preservation and different types of housing typologies. So the concept of the missing middle is, is stated in the comprehensive plan. What that means is we, we have a lot of housing that's coming through the pipeline that is detached single family or your typical garden style apartments. But what about the other types of housing that people would like to live in as well? So you have two extremes that are coming through the pipeline right now, they're very expensive, but what about the middle housing that is less expensive and, and used to be available in a lot of communities but has been, for whatever reason, zoned out? So now the housing element tries to address that. So that includes duplexes, quads, buildings with four units, things of that nature. The natural resources and open space statements and policies in the current comprehensive plan were moved into this next section here and consolidated into a section called natural resources. So this talks about open space policies, parks, and all the environmental and wetland policies are, are located here as well. The next half of the, or next, like, half of the comprehensive plan is all about public facilities. The city or the state requires us to have level of service standards for all our public facilities that are concurrency related, and that is transportation, water, sewer, stormwater, solid waste, schools, and all of that is addressed with a schedule of capital improvements, a budget, a five-year budget that comes to you every December inside a capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan. And there are level of service standards that are called, that is, to help us address those concurrency requirements by the state statutes. That's all here, that's all pretty much been carried over from our current comp plan to this new comp plan with some tweaks, of course. We've added a new parks level of service standard, and this is, would ask for small parks within a quarter mile walking distance from new residential development. But if there's one already within a quarter mile, you wouldn't have to provide that park. But if there isn't one, you'd probably need to incorporate something as part of your residential development. And that would be something that, if this policy is adopted, that would be something we'd have to look into in the code to see how we can implement that. And that's true of many other goals, objectives, and policies and strategies throughout this comprehensive plan. If adopted, we would need to go and evaluate our comprehensive, our land development regulations and other programs that the city has to see what we would need to do to help implement this comprehensive plan. The second to last piece of this comp plan is a interlocal, or excuse me, intergovernmental coordination element. We just carry that over, we made some minor tweaks to it. It does have a do, a new strategy in there to ask us to do, create a, a master annexation plan. So we have a very large urban or service area or utility service area that we, we are the sole provider of water and sewer. So as properties become annexed into the city or want to connect to our utilities, they are required to annex into the city. A master annexation plan and basically an agreement with the county of how that is done in a more streamlined process is something that the, this comprehensive plan is, is recommending. And last but not least, we have an implementation section, which you do not have a copy of yet. But basically what it does is it carries over all the strategies from each of the sections of the comprehensive plan, puts it into a matrix, and then it identifies a timeframe of a short term or a long term frame of when that particular strategy should be implemented and who, what agency or what department would be the primary responsible agency or department for that particular strategy. That's something I would need, I would like to bring to you. I've shown you examples of that before, but the full complete list of that matrix still needs to be developed. That's what I have, I'll try to answer any questions you have about this agenda item. Again, we would recommend an up or down vote as to whether you believe that this is worthwhile sending to the state for review. This is not an adoption hearing. This still has to come back to us for us to do another round of public hearings for adoption if that's, if the city wanted to do that. But the, the benefit of doing this transmittal hearing now is to send us to the state to see what they say, to see whether we are doing the right thing, consistent with the, with the state statutes, and whether they believe that there might be some additional things. We, we are doing something progressive or right for the city of Titusville. So hopefully we'll be able to get some comments back from the state to see if we're going in the right direction, and that's what we're recommending to you tonight.
Thank you, sir. Member Richardson.
Brad, I thought that we had submitted it already to the state.
No, sir, what we brought to you back in September was a, it was informational only because that was, that meeting was the culmination of all the meetings and workshops that we had to see whether you, you agreed with the changes that I included in that draft based on all the comments that were made during the public, during the workshops.
And then there was a council meeting that they voted to send it to the state, if I recall.
So in January, we, we were able to bring the recommendations from the PNC and the draft plan to the council, and they recommended going forward and scheduling the transmittal hearings. So those were not advertised public hearings at that time.
Okay. One of my concerns is this is a living, breathing document. It is, in effect, it's the crowning planning document. So some of these ordinances that we're discussing now, like the tree ordinance and low impact development, should that language be included in this draft? Or am, I'm afraid that it will say, it is not consistent with the language in the comprehensive plan.
So give you an example to answer your question, there were many discussions about canopy policies, and we included generalized canopy policies that we looked at, found from other jurisdictions, especially Tampa, carry them over into this draft comprehensive plan. So I think the, the work that the commission is doing now as far as a tree ordinance would not be inconsistent with that, with those policies that we have draft policies in this plan now.
And as I remember, we submitted nineteen pages of comments. The chairman before Dwight.
Yes, Mr. Williams, chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Williams. And Dwight and I submitted the total nineteen pages of comments. And I'm especially concerned because we, we attended a workshop, I think Chelsea was there, it was Gabriel's first as an employee of the city of Titusville, and you ran it, where we talked about different issues, and it was pointed out that as far as in the mobility section, we're the second or fifth deadliest place for pedestrians in the United States. And it expresses concern that something be done, that that be addressed long term. Is it addressed?
I think we tried to address that, we brought that, I remember bringing those, those presentations to you and statistics from a Smart Growth Americas, an agency that publishes a report every couple of years on the MSAs, the metropolitan statistical areas around the country. And they, they published a report called Dangerous by Design. And the MSA that we are located in with Melbourne, Titusville, and Bombay is the third most dangerous for pedestrians in the country. In fact, I think it was several, a handful of them in the state of Florida were in the top 10 rankings. So Florida's pretty dangerous for pedestrians all around, and mainly it's because of our, the way we design our, our roads, from what I understand. So we looked at the transportation element of our comprehensive plan to see if there are policies in there that, that may need to be revised to help address that, that issue and others. And the policies that we currently have right now only talk about roadway capacity. I mean, they're very limited, so I think it's only a couple of pages. What we tried to do was look at the best practices from other communities, especially in the state of Florida, and from the Center for Urban Transportation Research at USF, they had some model policies as well. And we tried to expand that to include access management, mobility statements, complete streets, policies that specifically address pedestrian access. So it's a much more expanded and more comprehensive element now that I think gives us better guidance as to what we should do in our land development regulations, our technical manuals, and any other requirements that we have.
Member Riley.
Brad, does, under public facilities, what does it say about inspection of sewer facilities so as to prevent what happened in December at Sandpoint Park?
Do you have a particular, did you find a particular policy that I can refer to, or are you asking if there one available?
Well, I'm only looking at your, the diagram that you passed out, and looking at the, we're under the public facilities. I was wondering if there was anything that would cover that.
I don't recall a particular policy that specifically says this, it does say, there is a policy in there that does say that the city should reduce as much as possible any potential outflow, and I think that is, or are you talking about accidental spills?
I'm actually speaking of inspecting some or all, depending on engineering practices, of the sewer lines in the city of Titusville to prevent what happened, you know, all that release of sewage at Sandpoint Park and all probably into the Indian River.
I think there should, there, I think the policies in there probably address that. I'd have to look through and confirm to see which policies specifically answer your question, and I'd like to provide that to you.
I'm just trying to get my head around your, your comprehensive plan to see, does this really give us a good guideline for that particular subject? That's, that's what I'm asking.
That, I, I mean, I'd have to look at the policies to see if there's something in there that specifically addresses that question. I would imagine that the Water Resources Department probably has some kind of program in place that they have to regularly inspect things on a routine basis. Because they do have to plan out where their, their enterprise funds are going to go in order to do routine replacements of, of infrastructure. And so I don't know how they would figure out how to spend that money unless they were doing some kind of, of, of inspection, but that's something I could certainly find out for the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or staff at this stage? Otherwise, we're going to open the public hearing. Not seeing any. That's the first person.
Casey Orange. Yes, my name is Casey Orange, and I live on Maryland Avenue in Titusville. The current comprehensive plan is clear and concise. The city will prevent clear cutting of land and will not allow the total removal of vegetation during land clearing. Regardless of this concise wording, the city allowed virtually all of Brookshire's eighty acres of trees be cut and burned, spewing ash into adjacent neighborhoods. All hydrological systems were destroyed, and this in an area of critical concern. The latest version of the 2040 comp plan retains the above provisions but adds, quote, "The city will continue to discourage clear cutting of land by incentivizing new developments to integrate existing healthy native vegetation and landscaping plans." The city is not currently discouraging clear cutting defined as cutting virtually all trees, so how can they continue doing so? Stronger wording is needed, such as, "The city will not tolerate clear cutting of virtually all trees." The 2040 comp plan indicates- The 2040 comp plan indicates, "The city recognizes the value of trees as an important resource. The city shall implement the LDRs related to tree preservation through the permitting process and the city tree ordinance to afford trees adequate protection during development through best management practices. But current and proposed LDRs do not sufficiently protect trees and their root zones and BMPs are not implemented. The comp plan should provide a lovely place to live for new residences and businesses, not a denuded landscape." Stormwater objective 1.4 states, "Comply with the basin management action plan for the North Indian River Lagoon. Written in 2013, FDEP's BMAP is a plan to restore sea grass in the lagoon through the reduction of nitrogen and phosphorus. Yet 95% of the sea grasses have been lost from the North Indian River Lagoon, resulting in starvation deaths of hundreds of manatees since January 2021." FDEP in its BMAP indicates, quote, "Although future development may meet state stormwater standards, the development may still contribute loading to the lagoon to ensure that future growth does not add to the degradation of the North IRL local governments. Must be proactive in controlling loads from future growth. Options to address future loading include low-impact development standards and Florida-friendly landscaping to further minimize the impacts of existing development and new development through local development regulations." Can I have another minute?
Do we have a motion to approve another minute?
I move, give Mr. St. Orange another minute.
Okay.
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Okay, no? Okay, go ahead.
FDEP indicated in 2013, "LID is necessary to prevent developments degrading the lagoon further yet policy 1.22 offers this insufficient language. The city shall evaluate and if appropriate adopt LIDs and LDRs to conserve natural resources. The negative impact of nutrient pollutions on surface water quality shall be minimized by encouraging the use of appropriate water quality management techniques. Minimizing and encouraging are weak language and not sufficient for future prevention of degradation. The accumulated negative impact of polluted runoff, septic tanks, failing sewage systems are apparent in the emergence of super blooms and the death of manatees, dolphins, fish, and pelicans. The lagoon is quickly becoming a dead zone detrimental to the quality of life and economic growth of our community. Additional work on the comprehensive plan is needed before transmittal to the state." Thank you.
Thank you. Member Riley, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Next card.
Marla Sprickle.
Hi. Marla Sprickle, 3 Indian River Avenue, Titusville, Florida. I'm, but I really don't envy you guys this job. I've been trying to look at the old comprehensive plan and figure out what's going on, and I don't know any of the history. Good for you guys. But I have a few questions, and these are novice questions because I haven't been involved with this stuff before. So this, the Planning and Zoning Commission, are you the official local planning agency?
Yes.
Yes. Do we have to have a member from the school board here, and do we?
I don't think we've appointed one for us.
Okay.
We historically have had one.
Okay. But you, you, they, do they know they have to appoint one?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right. And then it says, I saw one section, the legal status, that it has been adopted in conformity with the act and blah, blah, blah. Such plan or element shall be consistent with such plan or element as adopted. Does anybody enforce that?
Well, they're supposed to.
What, what are you referring to?
Well, this is just at the very beginning of the comprehensive plan. It said, this is the old one now. I don't have whatever your new, the new stuff is.
Well, there's state statutes that, and I can defer to the attorney, that clearly say that development has to be consistent with a comprehensive plan.
That's correct.
Okay, well, who checks?
What?
Who checks?
A few citizens, I believe.
Oh. Okay, how, how long has this plan been in effect, the original one?
At least since the late 80s or early 90s, I believe.
In the 70s, we, our first one's in the 70s. This one is in the 88.
Yeah.
So the lagoon is getting worse, not better. It's not working.
I believe we've included some new policies in there that help address this, including a reference to our BMAP, which is the basin management action plan, which we didn't have before. And so that, by having a reference to that.
That's where you get points for educating the public?
Well, there are other things included as opposed to education also for infrastructure.
Well, I did see the, the BMAPs going in Sandpoint Park Pond. I think we need a lot more of that, and I was very excited. We should brag about that one. But when I see the term best management practices, I know something is going to go wrong. Does every time I, every time I run into anything like that. When I see the term more economically and environmentally feasible, I think that's, there's too much wiggle room right in that, in phrases like that. If something says economically feasible, it's easy to say, well, it's not economically feasible. I can show you my numbers. It's not feasible. I have one more thing.
Okay, go ahead because we were answering some of your questions.
Under the preserve and enhance the quality of the natural environment, there's a whole list of policies. Most of the important policies under this objective include words like should and encourage. There is no enforcement or incentive to follow those policies, and little is getting done.
Thank you. Next card.
William Klein.
I'm William Klein. I live at 3 Indian River Avenue in Titusville. I just wanted to make a few comments on the 2040 comp plan. Titusville City Council is responsible for the growth and quality of life in Titusville and the condition of the IRL in Titusville. They are in the process of approving the 2040 comp plan and the future condition of Titusville. The present plan is inadequate to protect the IRL or the future quality of life that we deserve. The North IRL has almost no exchange and is becoming a stagnant polluted dead zone. The algae blooms are becoming denser, and last year they lasted for seven months. The clams and oysters have been exterminated. About 95% of the sea grasses have died. The manatees are dying from starvation. Titusville is polluting more than they are removing the pollution, and each year the IRL gets worse. Using EPA data for stormwater runoff from developments with 75% impervious and compacted surfaces, Titusville will create 3.8 billion gallons per year of polluted stormwater runoff from the 4,800 acres available for development. If Titusville would require new developments to comply with strict LID regulation, they would prevent over 80%, or 3.1 billion gallons per year of polluted runoff into the IRL. We really need LID. Because Titusville does not have adequate LID regulations, developers are demolishing huge acreage of natural forest and many wetlands, such as the area of critical concern. The approval of Brookshire is a prime example of the destruction of the quality of life and an endangerment of a major drinking water supply. Titusville approves clear cutting and destruction of soil fertility of home lots, creating a heat island effect that increases the temperatures of Titusville from the loss of our tree canopy. Titusville has not imposed adequate impact fees on new development to build infrastructure to prevent sewage spills or to develop a testing and maintenance system of their stormwater ponds to detect major problems like the large sewer leaks that kill all the fish in them before they find that there really is a sewer leak. I think this leak started in July of last year from the measurements that I have taken and I have submitted this information to Titusville. The sewer leak was long before December. Presently, Titusville has these problems with a polluted IRL and the loss of much of our wildlife because we have lost most of our natural living shoreline. The IRL and its marine life is dying. Titusville claims to be a tree city, but we do not have an urban forest program. We do not have an enforced tree abuse and protection. We are losing our tree canopy and its cooling effect as the temperatures rise. We have not defined and written regulations to protect wildlife areas and wildlife corridors. We have approved permits for developers to clear cut thousands of acres and destroy.
How much more time do you need, sir?
Probably a half minute.
Do we have a motion to approve a minute?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor say yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have approved permits for developers to clear cut thousands of acres and destroy heritage trees. We allow crowded zero lot line developments. We use old technology for stormwater ponds that have failed their design criteria. We should stop calling Titusville a tree city and gateway to nature. Titusville is more interested in cramming in as many houses and people in Titusville as we can. Titusville has lost a lot of the quality of life reasons that I have moved here for. I'm afraid to swim in the IRL or eat the fish from it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next card.
Mary Sparr.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Sparr, 825 Clifton Cove Court, Coco. I'm going to talk tonight about the conservation land use and wetlands language in the ENE section. And I hope that this language can be improved before we send it up to the state reviewing agencies. Okay, so what I've done is marked up the CNS category from page 70 of your 2040 plan. And then I've made some comments on the ENE. But if you can go through this handout with me, the description of the CNS category, the first paragraph, I didn't change in any way. Okay. There's been quite the change in, you know, the way I think that staff would like to treat these large wetlands. So I'd like the language basically to go back to the way it was in the existing future land use. And so those wetlands that are five acres or greater in size, that's what really belongs in the conservation land use. And then smaller wetlands generally will be treated differently and a lot of times end up in a conservation usement. So the way I've marked it up, the first underline says, "On areas verified to be wetlands five acres or greater in size, the conservation plan category will remain." Now, wetlands less than five acres in size may be changed to a different land use plan category as specified in the environmental ENE goals, objectives, policies of this comprehensive plan through the comprehensive plan amendment process." That is the way it works now, and I'd like that restored. What, what this 2040 plan, the way it reads now is that, you know, "On areas verified to be wetlands, the CNS plan will remain unless otherwise specified in the LDRs." Well, deferring to the LDRs is, I'm sorry.
How much more time do you need? Look like you need, is it three minutes?
That'd be great. I don't know if it's too generous for the board.
Still moved. Three, three additional minutes, okay? Do we have a motion, second? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so you don't just go deferring to the LDRs and please the state. So I suggest that, you know, they change it back to the way it was. And then, of course, uplands can be changed to a different land use plan category. Now, the next section that I marked up is environmental impacts. So what this, the language that they have there is giving more leeway for the permitting agencies to decide what impacts to wetlands should happen in Titusville. And that's just the way it's not supposed to work. You have the permitting agencies to do permitting and the cities to do land use planning. It's two different things. And the county ran into this, various arguments over time. In 2003, I believe it was, came up with some language that would clarify the situation and state on record that the city has its responsibility for land use planning. That's what I'm suggesting, that impacts to areas designated as conservation shall be considered if it is, this is your language from your current comp plan. If it is unavoidable due to the absence of feasible land or practical alternatives for reasonable use of land or the regulations create an inordinate burden on, burden, or on an existing use of land or a vested right to a specific use of land or due to a significant site constraint and/or practical design modification constraint. Okay, that's your existing language. Now, this is, this avoids a problem that you recently had. The next sentence, "No wetland shall be impacted by development activities without appropriate review and approval by the city." We don't want somebody filling wetlands and then all of a sudden they become impacted wetlands or uplands. Okay, so this is a county, it take kind of a variation on the county language. Where the wetland degradation or destruction has been permitted by the applicable regulatory agencies, the city shall apply the land use planning policies for protecting wetlands and their functions under the ENE objectives 1.10, 2.1, and 2.2, and the density requirements of the conservation land use plan category. So I, I do hope that this will be considered. And then if you turn over, I, I can let you defend with this if you want, or if you would like to give me some more time, I'd be glad to.
Okay, any questions for the speaker? Any motions as far as additional time? Thank you. Next card.
Kathleen Perez.
I'm Kathleen Perez. I live at 325 South Washington Avenue in Titusville. I, if I understand this correctly, this is about the 2040 comprehensive plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because I looked at it online, I have it on my phone, but it's kind of too tiny. But I didn't even recognize the town of Titusville in any of these pictures or drawings or anything like that. It's, I didn't understand, it didn't make any sense to me. I don't know if you can clarify? I don't know if you can clarify, but for example, I saw on there a six mile waterfront trail. There isn't six miles of waterfront available in Titusville anywhere anymore, right? And then I saw another part that said, well, maybe we'll, maybe we'll encourage homeowners like to, you know, give up their properties for this. Maybe we'll find a way to magically get some of the property back that is on the riverfront. I really didn't understand that because we're still building on the riverfront now. And if I use myself as an example, I live on the river. My husband and I bought a house from nineteen fifty-three, and we did some renovation. We didn't really change, you know, we changed the outside, let's say. There was a five foot fence there. We were told, and it was falling down, we were told we couldn't replace it unless we made it four feet so we wouldn't block the view of the river. So we did that. There's an empty lot beside us, and we thought that lot was, we thought the rule on the books was they could build five stories or less there on that lot. When we purchased our house, that's what we thought, and that with additional setbacks. Later, we found out that a permit from 2004 is still in force that will allow ten stories next to us. Yeah, and we've been trying ever since to find out exactly how that happened. We've been to many, many meetings, and we hear these kind of half answers, but nobody really answers it. People say things to each other like, "Well, I am kind of concerned that just placing a dumpster on the site was enough to continue the CUP," yeah, CUP, conditional use permit. And other, someone else said, "I am kind of worried that, you know, we allowed them to extend it another three years because they put a planter on the site," which, by the way, is not on the site currently. So that permit was passed from one person to another person all these years later. It's still in force today to put ten stories next to the river with a huge parking lot. And by the way, my property and this property adjoins a big culvert that goes directly into the river. And on the property next door to me.
Do we need additional time?
Yes, please.
How much?
Just one minute.
Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Still moved, second? Do we have a second? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
opposed, no? Okay.
Okay, thank you. The property next to us that I'm talking about also has an easement of some kind because there's a huge drain there that drains directly into the river where that parking lot and that ten story building would go. So as I said, I'm kind of mystified when I look at this plan for this fabulous place while we're doing what we're doing now, which is clear cutting everything, polluting everything, not following our own zoning laws. And my final comment is this, I'm a bicyclist and I'm in a bicycle club, and I saw that on the comprehensive plan, and I know titles always were bike friendly. If you start downtown on the bike path and you go to, you will have to ride the entire bike path into Volusia before you find one porta potty on that bike path, okay? That's, I don't know, it's sixteen, seventeen miles or something like that. There is one kind of blocky bathroom at, sorry, never mind.
Thank you. Any additional cards?
No, sir.
Okay. Based upon that, we'll close the public hearing, come back before the commission. Commission have any comments or question? I just wanted to indicate that I did ask staff to provide to you, and I'm sure you did receive, the August fifth, two thousand twenty and September second, two thousand twenty minutes, which is when the Planning and Zoning Commission last considered the 2040 plan as such. I will just indicate to you, I'm sure you don't have a lot of my previous comments. I was appointed on the Planning and Zoning Commission in September two thousand and eighteen. October, November was my first view of the comprehensive plan. At that time, after reading the comprehensive plan, my primary concerns were two things. One, protection of the Indian River Lagoon, and secondly, protection of the area of critical concern. The plan as drafted at that time did not provide any new protections. Matter of fact, there was even lessening of some of the requirements from my perspective. Over the last couple of years, there have been some changes. Whenever it's my turn later, I defer to you. I will pass out some suggested changes. These are some of the same changes that I made in May sixth, two thousand and nineteen, as well as the ones I suggested in August of two thousand and twenty. So with that, open member rights.
Well, yeah, I'm a little bit of a disadvantage. I don't have a lot of the background that you all have, and I can appreciate the hard work you all put in. But I have a couple of questions with staff, real quick. In this document, are any of these policies existing policies that we already have? And if they are, why weren't those, I'm just used to seeing, you know, something that's highlighted that's existing and something that's changed or something that's new. It would help as a reviewer identify what is existing and what's not. And I just wondered why we didn't have that.
So we did have a previous version of that at previous meetings.
Okay.
That showed the highlighted versions of what was carried over.
Okay.
Versus what is being proposed by various consultants. So we do have a version of that that I can provide to you.
Okay. My other question, one of the issues we had with the existing comprehensive plan when it was adopted in, I think, nineteen ninety-four, that's what I recall, ninety-three, something along those lines, is that we adopted wetland conservation areas based on a national wetland inventory map from nineteen eighty-seven, I believe, or eighty-six. And so my question here is, the wetland map that's in this plan, where did it come from? And how was it drawn?
That came from some more recent GIS data that was provided, available publicly from state agencies. I can, I'll have to take a look to see what the actual source was.
It would, because part of the problem we had back in eighty-seven, it was before a lot of the digital age and everything like that, and we put these land uses and zoning categories on conservation land. But then when, you know, environmental scientists went out there and surveyed the actual, you know, ground truth, the wetlands, the maps didn't overlay properly. And it took changes of all kinds of comprehensive plans and rezonings, and it was a mess. It was a nightmare. Every time you ever did anything, you know, those maps never changed up. And I just want to make sure that this time around, that maybe we head some of that off with a pretty accurate depiction of what we do have as a wetland inventory.
Unfortunately, no. So what, that land use category that was created back in the late eighties, the plan that we currently have in effect, yes, it was based on wetland inventory, national wetland inventory information that was available at that time. We did not, that land use category is fixed. It's actual comprehensive plan, future land use category now. So it's not, the only way to change the boundaries of it is through comprehensive plan amendments that are based on ground truth, wetland delineations for that particular project, property. So we did not go forward and reinvent that wheel by updating our wetlands, using more updated wetlands information, which is still not technically ground truth anyway, to create a new, brand new comprehensive plan land use category. So the boundaries you see in green on the future land use map is the same boundary you see on the current future land use map.
Oh, wow.
So we're just carrying it over. So the process of going through that, that process of doing a comprehensive plan amendment with a ground truth wetland delineation is being carried over to the new plan.
So we really don't know what, this map is not a true depiction of our wetlands?
Correct. It's only based on the most recent available data that the state has, which is a little more, obviously a lot more accurate than what the, what we initially got from the national inventory back in nineteen eighty-eight. That we tried, just so you know, that we did try to propose in a previous, initial version of this comprehensive plan, a removal, a complete overhaul of that conservation land use amendment process.
Okay.
In fact, we wanted to get rid of it because we didn't see it as useful. There, we think there were other tools that could have been, could be used that other cities are doing, but the recommendation from the commission and from the council was to keep it.
Okay. And when, when this gets adopted, wherever elements, since this is pretty much a completely new plan and reorganized, even though some of the elements might be existing or correspond to existing. I know the next phase is the adoption of LDRs to meet the comprehensive plan, and that's a pretty enormous undertaking, okay? And part of the problem in nineteen ninety-three or ninety-four, when city council considered the LDRs, is they were handed two books of LDRs, and there was one council member that sat on the LDR committee for probably two years, and, but then it all came to city council to adopt, and it was extremely overwhelming. And we knew it was overwhelming, and we knew that there was probably issues that we had to deal with. And the only way we could manage it, okay, at that time, was to say, all right, staff, when you find a problem that is unanticipated, you need to bring it back to city council for us to fix. And so over the next twenty years, we were fixing problems. Okay. Not a great way to move forward, but.
I don't know if there's a perfect way of doing it, of what, I think what the process with the city went through back in nineteen ninety-three was a tremendous overhaul of the code. Yeah, and it was, but I don't think that there is any way of writing it that would require, eliminate the possibility of having to make tweaks because of unintended consequences. But I do think that if we go forward with this, there is another way.
Okay.
Yeah, there are many other ways that it could be done.
Well, my recommendation would be that instead of handing a city council, you know, commission, two big LDR books and say, here you go, okay? We need to break this, these elements into sections and do a section at a time that they can adopt and absorb that data and make good decisions on the final product of the LDRs because it's still a very, a large undertaking. In this process, are we going to do a administrative rezoning of the city also? Is that anticipated or no?
I don't know. In fact, I don't think it's, I, based on what I'm reading here and the gauging the opinions and the communications I've had with P and Z members in the past, I don't know if it's going to be necessary. What we could do, other cities have just adopted overlays. So you still have the underlying zoning, and then someone wants to do a particular unique development, you have an overlay or some kind of tool there in place that's on top of that allows that particular development. So you don't actually have to do a complete overhaul of your zoning districts. There are many ways of doing this, and I totally agree with you, doing this in parts as well.
Because that was the other issue we had, is that when you administratively rezon the entire city, you know, people, your public hearing, because when you rezon someone's property, they have the right to come in and object or not object and what have you. And that was pretty overwhelming also to do it all at one time. So those are just some of the lessons I think that I learned when I was on city council in the early nineties, okay? And I wouldn't wish that on any city council member.
Member Wright, uh, member Richardson. I have one quick question, and then I have a comment. Brad, I know I've seen the comp plan twenty forty about two thousand forty times. But I just noticed that the core area stops at Broad Street and doesn't go to Garden. Who made that decision that the core area was between Broad and South and didn't go all the way to Garden Street?
You're referring to page fifty-eight of the document itself. That's the, for the downtown land use category?
Yeah.
So, yeah, the consultant suggested that as a planning document, as part of the planning recommendation for where we could focus certain types of regulations there, separate from other parts of the downtown. So that was a suggestion of the consultant. This is not saying.
The consultant that doesn't live here.
Well, correct, yeah. They provided recommendations to us. We included this image in here based on the vision documents they gave us. They, these are not binding. I mean, that particular boundary right there is just to indicate where our core, where we believe our core area is. If we want to make changes to this, we certainly can to expand the boundaries a little bit. But this is where they saw the most intense uses would be focused here as the major placemaking area of our downtown. And then the surrounding area, the secondary area, was the support area. So there are many ways to interpret that. At one point of our discussions with them, they saw the secondary area is primarily residential with some commercial that helps support the major activities that are going on in the core area.
Okay. And I have one more comment. It seems like in some ways we're putting the cart before the horse. We should put this on the back burner and adopt the tree protection ordinance as a first priority and the low impact development ordinance first, even if we have to stop permits for a while, then development permits. I think we've really got to, because we've been talking about the tree ordinance for two years, two years. And that's what I'm afraid. I agree with a lot of things that are in the comp plan, but I think if we approve this comp plan, we're approving language that we're violating all the time. So that's my comment. Member Grant.
I agree with Secretary Richardson one hundred percent. My question, Mr. Parrish, deals primarily with environmental. Considering what you've heard here tonight from the audience, considering what has happened to our river within the last year, considering what has happened to our city in the last few months with the sewage spill and et cetera, et cetera, do you really, do you think that this comp plan is worthy of transmittal?
I do. I think of the work of the commission and the recommendations you gave me as far as what to include in here is enhancing some of the environmental policies were very good. I heard some very good comments this evening. I'd like to speak with the audience members and speak, meet with them in person about what maybe could be included as well. There's some good recommendations. The main thing that I think, the reason I believe that the comp plan is worthy of sending to the state at least to get their review, is because we're doing two things. One is because we're tying land use and transportation together, we're really focusing on compact mixed use development versus suburban sprawl. That's a priority type development. We're really focusing on trying to revitalize areas that are already developed, those redevelopment opportunities. And then we're trying to folk or discourage sprawl development and allow and really encourage compact development where proposals are submitted to us for a new residential development. So for example, clustering those lots together to help preserve as much open space as possible. This comprehensive plan really explicitly states those things, whereas the previous comprehensive plan kind of touches on it a little bit. So I really do think that's, that's, those are the two reasons I believe it's worth sending to the state.
Ma'am?
I do believe that those two things, especially the redevelopment component and not, and focusing on that, I think that in itself helps the Indian River Lagoon and environmental policies because you're trying to encourage development in those built areas versus unbuilt
Member Spardale.
I like your comments, Mr. Parrish, but I concur with Member Richardson, Secretary Richardson and Member Grant. I think that the city is in crisis environmentally right now, and that. And that, that to me is, that we are putting a comprehensive plan without some specific details. Citizens tonight talked about specific terms, not recommended or loose terms, but more tightened terms that are specific, especially in development and also in land use. I can, I, I like that recommendation. I think that we've loosey-goosey enough in this city. And I think we're also skating very, very close to destroying environment. We've seen it in the last 30 days. We're seeing it every 30 days.
Any other comments by Commission members? As I indicated upfront, I did, I went back to my comments made two years ago as well as the comments made back in May. I appreciate the fact that there's some of those comments or suggestions that have been incorporated. I appreciate that. I'd like to hand out and some additional, some suggestions. Mr. Parrish, I have a copy here for you, if you don't mind coming up and getting it. The first page is at 136 of the agenda, page 33 of the plan. And it's waterfront strategy number four. It just simply says the city will evaluate brass practices to eliminate untreated discharge from major outfalls. I'm suggesting that you have a timeframe in there, and my suggestion, that'd be within two years. I think you're almost required to do that. Otherwise, how can you determine whether you met your goals, objectives, and policies and procedures? So that's a suggestion there. And the next A, B, C, D, and E are things I mentioned in May of 2019 or even earlier. And these are ideas. I think there needs to be, as it relates to the Indian River Lagoon, the first suggestion was it could be a strategy someplace if you think it's appropriate or not. Review and investigate establishing a 20-foot preservation or conservation easement for all new developmental along the Indian River Lagoon. B, all new development along the lagoon will be designed to prohibit direct discharge or runoff from uplands into the lagoon. And any discharge will be designed to remove nutrients from discharge utilizing best management practices. C, the city shall, within two years, conduct a review of all septic tanks within the east, city east of the FEC Railway and develop an action plan for the removal and connection to the public source system. D, the city stormwater utility shall, within two years, evaluate best practices to eliminate direct discharge of stormwater into the lagoon. E, the city, within two years, form a committee or establish an organization to explore and evaluate best practices to rehabilitate or improve the water quality and environmental conditions of the Indian River Lagoon. I have heard so countless times that, well, there's this countywide committee that's doing this, this, and this. And of course, they're primarily pumping muck out of canals in very expensive houses, neighborhoods to our south. And it has not done anything in spending millions of dollars not improving anything here. I don't think the city should just constantly refer to somebody else as, that, well, they'll take care of it. I think we need to be responsible and try to address the issue. And this committee or existing organization, existing might be the Titusville Environmental Commission, and I think they're doing, starting to do some of that, and Mr. Rice can update us on that. But the kid, the city just can't bury its head in the sand and say it's all going to go away and rely upon some other agencies. Yes, I like the fact that we have these B-maps and we're ahead of the game on that. That's a good thing. But guess what? It's not solving the problem. It's just not solving the problem. And we need some real thinking about how to solve the problem and try to improve the water quality in the Indian River Lagoon. I think, Mr. Rice, you mentioned to me that the Environmental Commission is saying, well, do we have testing of outfalls so we could perhaps isolate or determine where pollution was coming from? As I recall, you indicated that to me. And that's an excellent idea. It should, should have been implemented when the problem started. In addition, I haven't relooked at the Titusville fertilizer ordinance. There was a big article about it, and it said in the newspaper, I don't think it's true, that Titusville has a 25-foot setback zone. You're not supposed to put 25 fertilizer within 25 feet of the river. Well, does the citizens of Titusville, do they know that? Do the lawn companies know that? Because I see it violated every day, every day. And if the city is going to be proactive about saving the Indian River Lagoon, it cannot bury its head in the sand, it has to do something about it. And that involves people or money? We need to do it because, as some speaker said, the lagoon is dying, it's dead. I mean, I'd love to plant seagrass if it's available. And why isn't the city coordinating some activity of planting seagrass along the Indian River? Why not? I think anyone who has a home along the, the river would be glad to do that, to do their part. But anyway, those are ideas, they need to be refined. But I think we ought to have some of these strategies because let's don't just look back, let's look forward to how we're going to make the place better. And what can we do to make it better? And I don't see us doing that, is what my concern is. So I'll get off of that one, on, onto the next one. It's page 51 of the plan itself, which is page 154. And I've asked this question, and perhaps I just do not understand it. I've, historically, the plans have never allowed commercial activities on local streets. The way I look at that graph or chart, it, it seems to allow research and manufacturing, neighborhood, neighborhood centers, gateway, downtown, commercial activity centers on local streets. Why? We have never done that before. I don't think it ought to be in here. I mean, maybe it should be in the land development regulations. But that is something that, to my knowledge, we've never done. The next comment I have is on page 70. Item C. I don't know why we're saying there, the city encourages the use of conservation easements rather than conservation land use plan categories. However, the comprehensive plan may be amended to reflect the accurate boundaries of, if the property owner choose to amend the comprehensive rather than dedicate. Why doesn't it say if the property owner or the city? Because someone will take this literally and say, city, that 4.5 acres of wetlands there, you can't designate it because only I can do it. And that's, to me, literally what it says. And we've never done that. Just said, the, the city can't designate land as conservation whenever it should be based upon its functional value and all the criteria. So I think that should be changed. Next is page 79, which is page 182. It's OS policy 2.2.5. I would suggest we say, instead of just incentivize or require, throughout this plan, we use, we want to incentivize people to do things. Sometimes, believe it or not, you want to require them to do thing because it's in the interests of public health and safety and welfare of the citizens. And we keep using the term, we will incentivize the preservation of open space. And maybe we want to require it. So I don't think we should tie our hands. Because I can see a development advocate saying, well, you can't require me to do that unless you're going to give me a big incentive. Next, page 83 of the plan itself, which is 186 of the agenda. I copied in the old sections dealing with clearcutting. I compliment staff that the language in here is far better than the original draft. But I still think we should rely upon our existing language, which basically prohibit or strongly discourage removal of vegetation and clearcutting of land. I think we ought to use our original language. In addition, on page 83, 1.1.8, change incentivize to require, the city will incentivize the preservation of tree canopy coverage with land development regulations. Do we really want to do that? We don't want to require? I, I just think that's inappropriate. And perhaps, Brad, I didn't catch you, is, is there a canopy goal in the plan? Or is there a timeframe in which we have to set one?
So the comprehensive plan does say that we will come up with a canopy goal. So it doesn't specifically state what, that percentage or whatever that is inside the comprehensive plan? As far as timeframes, we left dates such as two years or anything like that out of the plan. And we were going to carry that over into a matrix that we want, implementation matrix that I've mentioned earlier, that we would present to you.
I'd rather have it in the plan itself personally. So that's my comment. I'd say that timeframe. Page 88, which is page 191. Again, 2.2.3. Where it says wetlands area, wetlands areas less than five acres may also be placed within the conservation plan upon request of the property owner. I don't know why we have that. It should be upon the request of the property owner or the city. You're tying your hands and, in a manner that I don't think it's in the interest of the city, is my view.
This is 2.2.3 environmental policy?
Yes.
So we, we added this language in here about areas, or wetlands areas less than five acres shall be protected through creative site design and clustering and development to avoid impacts to these areas and achieve the goal of no net loss of wetlands. Reason why we said that is because currently in our comp plan, it only addresses wetlands that are five acres or more, have to be put into a conservation land use. Doesn't really address anything that's smaller than that, other than just protecting them based on their functional values. Then we have to rely on St. John's. We thought that this language, this is new, would help us focus on those creative designs or tools that we can include in our comprehensive pla, or our landfill regulations in the future, such as what we've got right now, maybe enhancing our clustering subdivision design or conservation subdivision design, things of that nature, to help incentivize preserving even those small wetlands as part of a development. So that was some extra language in there. That's what that's, that we included in here to help address that. It doesn't sound like it's been very clear to, to many members of the Commission or even some, um, members of the public.
I still think it should include our city. I, I think certainly the existing, and number nine on this page, is the old language, which addressed wetlands less than five acres will be subject to review, determine what protections, if any, they should. Said review is based upon the functional value criteria, et cetera. What you just said is you defer to St. John's.
No, sir.
It's wrong. I've had that conversation with staff before. With all due respect, we are shirking our responsibility to protect the wetlands. This doesn't say we defer to St. John's. I know you want to do that because you don't have to review it and don't have to have the necessary staff to do that. But we have a responsibility to protect the wetlands ourselves from a land use planning perspective. I mean, that's the way I look at it. 89, page 192, the top of the page. Where it says, any unavoidable damage or loss of wetlands shall be mitigated to ensure no net loss of wetlands, et cetera. I would put a period after no net loss of wetlands, period. Because I know what you mean by that. You're going to say, well, if St. John says to go buy, go pay $50,000 for land in Volusia County, well, that's a no net loss of wetlands. I don't view it that way. I'm talking about no net loss of wetlands in Titusville. So I respectfully urge that we strike the latter portion of that so it's, to ensure no net loss of wetlands.
Can you repeat the section that you're talking, which policy?
Okay, page 89, page 192 of the agenda, E.
E.
Just at the end of the first sentence or first, yeah, line, put a period at the end of wellens. Delete the rest of it.
2.2.4E.
Yes, thank you, bud. And my last item is a thing I keep bringing up. There's no money in the future budget for reclaimed water system within the area of critical concern. If you don't want to put any for fiscal year 20, why don't we put, like we did for 10 years or more, $100,000? We did for 10 years or more, $100,000 for the reclaimed water system. As a budget estimate, I, I know in October 2019, the City Council authorized a reuse study. And as I understand it, it hasn't been done yet, isn't complete.
I do have an update on that.
Okay.
So we do have a draft that was presented to city staff. So I have not seen it myself, but I know that Water Resources has been working with consultant on that. So hopefully, we will have a version that'll be available to the public to review once that is complete. So I think they are working or reviewing a draft of that right now.
Okay, okay. Well, I might ask to see it. Let me, I'll get to you, Member Rice, next. Let me make a suggestion. I know you said you wanted to vote up or down. I would respectfully urge the Commission, if you agree with some member of this, some citizen, other person's comment, or some of my comments that we're recommending body, the motion include those. Most, we recommend transmittal with the addition of XYZ. Rather than forcing us to say we like yours or no, we don't like it. I, I don't want, I think we need to move forward. So, Member Rice.
I have a question, staff. It's more of a process question. When you transmit to the state and it comes back, okay, it, what you get from the state are their comments? And then it goes back through a public hearing? And during the public hearings that you have, does it come back to P and Z during the public hearings?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And can some of the items we heard tonight and what, what our chairman is, is, can those things be incorporated if we want to at that time?
Yes.
Without affecting, or do we have to retransmit them to the state?
That depends on how significant the change is.
Okay.
So we can work with the state?
That's the problem.
Okay, that, I just want to understand the process.
I want to inject here because we, Mr. Barris and I have had that conversation. I've heard countless times, this is just a transmittal. You will review it again. And then when it comes back, they said they'll, uh, the state has recommended this. The state has endorsed it in essence. And I've seen situations which you then have to go through the process again. So I think you need to be reasonably satisfied with whatever we transmit so that they see it.
Okay. And that, that concerns me greatly considering this is the first time I've ever seen this plan.
I know.
Okay. But I under, and I appreciate the hard work that you guys have put in, into this plan. I don't want to go backwards. Uh, but if I, you know, if, if this transmittal came back and I had, it afforded me the opportunity to die, really digest what was here and be able to make, you know, recommendations, I would love, I'd love to be afforded that, you know, that opportunity. But I'm not sure that I will be afforded that opportunity is what I guess I'm hearing. So with having said that, then I'm going to say a few other things, okay, based on that. Although I was going to keep it for my TEC update, uh, we did review the LID ordinance at our meeting. And, um, although we only got about halfway through, okay, there again, it's, it's another tree ordinance type, you know, it, it's very important and take, and, and should, um, take a lot of consideration. But I think as a commission, including me, okay, we're leaning toward making it a requirement. Okay, because I really do.
Just so you know, that was the unanimous vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
That was unanimous voted. That's the reason why I suggested those minutes be sent to you.
Okay. Because, um, I do see that as a future of how we saw pollutant loading and stuff like that with stormwater. And I, I think as a designer, we just have to be able to use those tools and learn how to use the tools. The critical part of LID though is, is, you know, the, it's the details that matter. Okay, and that's what we have to address and how we, we formulate those details. Because if the ordinance is written now, it, it's sort of, um, you can elect to use it and then you get these incentives. Where our take is, no, if we make it mandatory, then these incentives are become, some of these things need to happen, like curving and roadside swells and all the things that LID allows, our code currently doesn't allow. Okay? So I don't know, Brad, I guess my question is, is if, if TEC and, and this body and then eventually city council says, yes, we're going to make this mandatory, how does that affect, you know, this, this transmittal?
I don't think it will. I mean, the policies, um, as Ms. St. Osgood came up and spoke about, um, the LID policies inside the comprehensive plan, and I think there's definitely room for improvement in some of the language, but we do have other language inside the coastal management section that is pretty straightforward, that we will adopt it. It doesn't say anything about requiring, just saying we're going to have that as part of our code and part of our implementation tools. So I don't think that if you, and your next agenda item, if you consider whatever your recommendation is going to be about adopting a mandatory or required or incentivized version of LID, I don't think it's going to be inconsistent with the policies we have in this current comprehensive plan.
Okay. And then one of the, I think it was Mr. Klein, uh, brought up was ur, uh, urban forestry program, you know, why don't we have one? And, um, I, I've given that a lot of thought because of the tree canopy ordinance. And I see that maybe we need to have some type, you know, I didn't, I would, I wouldn't call it an urban forestry program, but it, that's as good as name as any, but why can't we use the landscape trust funds that are dedicated? That's exactly what they're, they should be used for and dedicate that for, toward an urban forestry program? Or, or a planting program to help tree canopy on existing sites throughout the city that don't have trees? I mean, there's, there's, you know, a lot of time, a lot of things that we do, it's, it's the cost that hang, that, that's prevents us from moving forward because of the cost. Well, by identifying the landscape trust fund as the mechanism which to fund that program, that might be a really viable option. I'm going to jump back, going to your first page.
Yes, sir.
With, with the outfalls.
Yes, sir.
In two years.
Yes, sir.
I guess what I'd like, staff, I'd like to know the cost of doing that within a two-year period. Because it, it, it's great as a goal, but is, if, if, if the city can't identify the funds to do that, I don't know that we'll meet the goal. And I want to make sure we set ourselves up for success, not for failure. But I do think it's necessary. I think we do need to address our outfalls. Because it's not just about new development, it's about the existing development that isn't getting treated, that before nineteen eighty-three, when stormwater wasn't even required. There's where a lot of load is coming from, okay? And we're not addressing that expeditiously, okay? Uh, because of funding, there again. So I, I want to know what the cost of implementing this strategy would be and, and how do we fund it? So that would be my take on that. That's it.
Okay, any other comments, questions by the commission? Member Porter.
A question for Brad. Back in August, July, August timeframe of last year, I know Member Murray said she had a number of pages of incorporations to go into the comprehensive plan. I was just wondering if any of those comments or all of those comments, did they get into your revision?
I did ask Ms. Murray about that, and she never did provide to me that extensive list that she mentioned at that meeting. But I had, I did have several in person, you know, telephone conversations with her about some of the policies. So there were some minor tweaks that I did make based on her recommendations, but nothing that was substantive, substantive. In other words, she, at the end of the conversation, she said she did not want to make so many changes that would stall the project. She wanted it to go forward as his, that, those weren't her exact words, but that's basically where she ended the conversation. She did give me examples of codes from other cities. So to help with the next step, if we did go forward with this, what would we do in the form, as far as updating our code? That's the only handouts really I received from her.
Okay, any other questions, comments by the commission? We, we do need to ta, I guess we could table the item, but I, I'm, it is advertised for public hearing and transmittal at the next council meeting next Tuesday night. So if possible.
I can, yeah, this, it is scheduled for the transmittal hearing before city council on Tuesday. And if they recommend approval of the transmittal, it'll just be sent to the state and we'll just wait for their report. And then we'll have to respond to the report and any objections they may have. And we have a certain amount of time.
Do you happen to know how either you or, uh, they could be Saka Fields about recommending table?
I don't.
They tend to listen to you too. Council does.
If you'd like to have more time or see another version of this based, I mean, I, what I can do this, I can, I can, I would like to meet with the people who spoke at the, at this hearing and maybe reach out to you individually to see if there are any questions or recommendations. I'd definitely like to speak with our staff about the recommendations that you brought up, Mr. Severs, um, and see if there are any particular policies we can come up with including there. So I can certainly come back to you at your next meeting and give you something and, and then ask you for whether you, um, would like to make a recommendation at that point or not. And then if that's your, if that's your call, basically, we will go to city council next Tuesday and tell them what happened and they'll make a decision as to whether go to table the item, which they most likely will do because they have done that in the past for this particular item.
Member Richardson.
Yes, uh, I tend to look around the room and see reactions. I saw Chelsea's reaction. I guess you were looking it up and saw that it was advertised.
I was trying to determine whether how, there was going to be one or two hearings in front of council and because we had discussed this at the planning meeting yesterday and talked about the possibility of delaying what has been advertised and the time certain and what was determined by this commission as far as council is scheduled to discuss it on Tuesday, May twenty-fifth. And whatever this commission decides, they're going to hear that recommendation because it's on their agenda. And so if you think that more time is needed, then they're going to hear that and then make their own independent decision as council has the right to do. They would prefer to have a recommendation from this body. And whether or not they get one, they can't control tonight. But I think that they, they just want to know how, how long it would be. Time certain is one of the questions that would determine whether or not re-advertising is required.
Well, I, um, had a conflict with an existing meeting and I had chose to be here tonight. And at that meeting is a member of council. And I told the member of council that it wouldn't be at that different meeting because of all this stuff that, all these things that was on our agenda tonight. And she said, you're kidding? And I said, yeah, I'm a, I'm afraid the tree ordinance will, more discussion will come of that. And I'm not really confident that the comprehensive plan will be sent to council for a recommendation. And I got the comment back, we'll table it. Because they understand what we're doing. We didn't have time to evaluate the comp plan and because there are so many new members that weren't involved in the commission eighteen months ago, was it? Yeah, but there's a lot of members that were here eighteen months ago. So at this time, um, I'm going to vote to table. And if it's, the motion is not made to table, the motion to send it with these comments, I'm still going to vote against it.
Okay, uh, any other comments, motions at this time?
I have a question for, a question for staff. Is it possible or is it helpful or is it hurtful to identify those areas that I'm, that I'm considering and I keep hearing from both the community and this council? Environmental, Indian River, those kinds of areas that are so critical to this plan to table just those sections and to approve a section? Is that, is that hurtful? Is that helpful?
I'd recommend it as one action item altogether. I, I don't think what I heard tonight was significant as far as requiring changes. Obviously I have to get approval from city administration as to whether the policies that I would draft based on the comments that are here are, would be supported by staff and we would recommend them to be part of this document. And then you'll obviously have to make your recommendation based on that.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't think what I heard tonight was, uh, difficult. Basically, I think I can come back to something.
It was doable.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Member Richardson. Well, Brad, will you clarify that statement again?
I thought what I heard tonight, the notes I took, I think I, after, I'd like to speak with everyone individually, but I don't, I did not hear anything that I think was diff, could, will be difficult to change.
Okay.
Now, my perspective, what I heard tonight, might be different from what you heard, sir. So you might see that there are significant changes that you, or there are some parts of this that are very difficult for you to, to accept. And so I may not be aware of that. When I speak with you, that story might change. And so I might have to come back to you to say, the request that I'm receiving here lends me to believe that this project is not going to be approved.
I'm mostly concerned about priorities, that we should submit the twenty forty plan at due time, but not tonight. That the tree protection ordinance and the low impact development ordinance should come first so that they don't conflict with each other. That's my main concern.
So if you are going to make a motion to table for discussion purposes, when would you table it to?
Probably, uh, August, to be honest with you. Until such time as we've got a tree protection ordinance and an impact develop, uh, low impact development ordinance before council.
Obviously they have to be re-advertised under that scenario.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Member Spidey.
I make a motion to table the current staff recommendation for the, should I state the date? The new comprehensive plan for twenty forty? Until such a time as both the tree ordinance and the limited, what do you call it? LID plan are passed.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Member Riley?
Yes.
Secretary Richardson?
Yes.
Member Porter?
Yes.
Member Grant?
Yes.
Member Rice?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Spidey?
Yes.
Chairman Severs?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is impact. Would anyone want to take a break?
Yes.
Okay. Let's take at least, uh, be back at eight o'clock, okay? Let's take at least, I'll be back at eight o'clock, okay? Called the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting back to order at this time. You need a big hammer. They don't give me a gavel. Work on that first.
We don't have to make a motion on voting?
Yes, we do.
We do? We don't have any, we can't, no, we're not a legislative body.
We're the one we had in storage.
The next item on the agenda is impact fee credit transfer ordinance. Do we have any cards on this item?
No, sir.
Staff.
Sure, I can introduce the item. So in 2021, the Florida Legislature amended provisions of the Florida Impact Fee Act related to impact fee credits. Section 163.31801 Florida statutes was amended to provide the impact fee credits, that impact fee credits are assignable and transferable. The proposed ordinance states that impact fee credits are assignable and transferable consistent with Florida statutes as may be amended from time to time. And for the commissions, possibly for your relief, this ordinance is much simpler. One page, the one change is on page two of three compared to the rather complex ordinances that we've been reviewing lately, the tree ordinance and the upcoming LID ordinance. So it is, it is a breath of fresh air to see a more simpler change. But essentially, the statute assigns that impact fees can can move with the person who pays the fee so that if the development is not using the impact on the infrastructure at that location, that it can, the the monetary value of that impact can be transferred to a different development that is impacting the system.
So it can, it can move to entirely different development?
Correct.
Okay. Member Rice, I think you have a question, sir.
Well, I guess, and I'm just thinking outside the box a little bit. Does this mean that if, let's say I was redeveloping something that was a very high intense use, okay? And it had transportation impact fees, had all these different impact fees. And then I redeveloped the site to something that has a lot less use and the impact fees are a lot less because of that. Does that mean the difference between what I'm building and what I had in my bank for impact fees? I could sell the credit?
In your hypothetical in the first development, was it completed?
Yes, it was completed. It was built, and I'm doing a redevelopment now because it's, it's, it's disrepair or for whatever, I'm knocking the building down, I'm doing a new, a new, a new building.
Understood. I don't believe.
And more intense use?
Less intense. From, it was more intense what was existing before. And when I knocked it down, I'm going to do it less intense, therefore I have a credit, okay? And does that mean a developer can sell that credit to another developer?
I don't believe that that's the case. It would be more so if you, if the the initial development had not been completed and you've you've paid for the impact on that and it can be reassigned. But I don't see the the situation that you're proposing. I don't see that in the the change to the statute on page 240 of 284.
Okay, well, then I'm a little confused, okay? And not, not that I want to table this because I don't, by any means, okay? But I thought in the city of Titusville, okay, and in a lot of communities, okay, you pay your impact fees just prior to your CO, okay? So there would be nothing to transfer if you didn't follow through with your development because you haven't paid anything until your CO.
Well, if you've paid but you haven't gotten your CO, I think that's the the situation that we're talking about.
Literally, see, my experience has been unless the city has changed their policy is that impact fees are paid at the time, just prior, at the closeout process, just prior to a CO. You can't get your CO until you do it. You have to show proof of payment. But, I mean, we're talking days, not months. Okay, and I understand what's driving this is the state statute, okay? But it really doesn't mean much here then to us, except for that we're complying with state statute. It gives you the opportunity to do that.
I, I think that the situation is such where there may be an agreement and the agreement would be for reimbursement of impact fees paid that would then be assignable or transferable. And again, this is a new law in 2020 that was enacted by Florida statutes. And the language is verbatim from the statute where it is coming from. But I think that there can be situations where impact fees are reimbursable to the developer once others are tied in. And that's the scenario where they may assign or transfer their credits that may be by agreement. I think. I don't, I understand the couple of day, the the timeframe between the CO and when those credits are paid. That wouldn't, I don't think that would make sense as you've just described. I think there's other scenarios where there'd be assignable.
Any other questions by any members?
242 of 284? Oh, I'm sorry, that's the, that's just the statute that was amended that I'm looking at. The agenda item starts on.
243.
243.
So as I understand it, we're just implementing a required state statute?
Correct.
Do we have a motion on an item? Member Grant?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the ordinance as rep 230.
All right, do we have second?
Second.
Member Richardson seconded? Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done, roll call.
Member Grant?
Yes.
Member Riley?
Yes.
Secretary Richardson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Spideau?
Yes.
Member Rice?
Yes.
Member Porter?
Yes.
Chairman Severs?
Yes.
Next item is low-impact ordinance. The recommendation is to table to the June 9th meeting. As you saw, I asked staff to send out the previous minutes when this, we were initially considering this item. And as indicated in the minutes, Vice Chair Richardson made a motion recommending the city council direct city staff to draw a low-impact ordinance that makes LID a requirement and have the draft ordinance done by January 1, 2021. Also, to only use a consultant if absolutely necessary. It was seconded and also seven members of the Planning and Zoning Commission voted in favor of it at that time. We do have an advertise, do we have any cards on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Member Richardson, do you have a motion?
Yes, I would make a motion that we table the item until TEC makes a recommendation to us. And I would like to add one comment. You know, I've been told that a corner of Pioneto and US1 is an excellent example of low-impact development. It's done by Member Rice.
Yes, sir. So that was a motion.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Secretary Richardson?
Yes.
Member Porter?
Yes.
Member Rice?
Yes.
Member Riley?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Spideau?
Yes.
Member Grant?
Yes.
Chairman Severs?
Yes. The next item was, I guess, a carryover from my previous request that we have a strategic planning activity at some point in time. I would recommend it not be tonight and defer to, if there's not many items, well, we know we're going to have LID. Is there anything else that you're aware of that will be on that agenda?
There's three items. There's the two new items that were advertised to come before you plus the LID that you've just tabled. The other two are, one, you've heard previously, the craft brewery ordinance that has been revised with the suggestions implemented. And then the second is a new item that hasn't been before this commission yet. There was a citizen request for council to consider temporary offices as a limited use in industrial. That item has been advertised for June 2nd as well.
Okay, at this stage, I would, why don't we put this as an agenda item on the next meeting? And if we have to table, obviously, it's not, we don't have to take action if we choose not to. The last item, as I indicated, would go back up to the tree ordinance. And one of the things I want to do is pass out some additional photographs primarily. And to me, the illustration is, and excuse the low ink, blue ink, okay? Excuse that. Sorry about that. I will have, I would just briefly explain. The first photograph of the tree is a quad oak that, and the quad oak is in the second photograph, which to me is a very unique tree. It, on the plan, shows it was 36 inches and they, as I understand it, measurement, they take the largest portion of the quad to measure it. But you rarely see an oak like that. The other photograph, you can see all the clearing. And I just show you this as far as how the current ordinance appears to me to be implemented as far as the area of protection around this magnificent, beautiful oak tree that you rarely see. And I think, I believe in examples and learning from examples. The, at the one that shows the oak tree and then immediately to the right of it is the wetlands. the wetlands. And immediately, there is to be constructed a six-to-seven-foot berm between the wetlands and that tree to make a retention, dry retention area, is what that is. And whether or not that quad oak will survive, time will tell. And when we get into talking about the, the critical root zone and things of that nature, I think the next set I'm going to pass out to you is some photographs showing. And the purpose of this is how our present ordinance is being interpreted or applied as far as retaining the natural buffer between the houses there in Tanglewood and the twenty-foot buffer as such. Whenever I was standing on this stub-out street here where I was at Tanglewood, the gentleman came out and said, well, initially, a twenty-foot was kept and then it was later came back and removed. So whenever we get, again, talking about the tree ordinance, I want to make sure I understand what our current code is and what is allowed as such. So that's the reason why I'm handing those out. Yes.
Have any of these residents in Tanglewood appeared?
Mike?
Have any of these residents appeared as members of the community about what's happening?
Well, there is a neighborhood-
HOA?
No, there's a neighborhood throughout the city where, on social media-
Facebook?
And one of our, Toni, I can't remember her last name, quoted a lot of people that were so angry about what was happening. As you may recall, the birds didn't know where to go whenever all this was cleared and all kinds of problems. And the dust and the smoke, et cetera. There was one gentleman that appeared, his name's in the minutes, that said, this is like the nineteenth century. We've gone backwards as far as development. That's what the gentleman said.
But wasn't that at the tree commission meeting?
That was at our Planning and Zoning Commission, our first tree meeting.
Okay.
I could see his name here in the minutes. That's what he said. The other concern I'd just like to bring to the commission's attention and staff. It really concerns me comparing apples and oranges and the area of critical concern and tree canopy and tree requirements compared with other jurisdictions. We are, there's no other city in Brevard County, and I assume on that list that went out, none of them have a surficial aquifer. In other words, the water we have is dependent upon the topography, the vegetation, all of those kinds of things. And if you destroy that, it impacts the quality and quantity of the water. And I will read to you, since I was involved back in the Dark Ages. The nineteen eighty-six aquifer protection ordinance, the freshwater management study, and this is, it talks about there are surficial aquifer, there are factors that result in the recharge of the rainwater into the soils creating a freshwater lens, I'm reading from the ordinance, which floats on top of the saline water of the Floridian aquifer. This freshwater lens is a single source of potable water for the city. At that time, it was. Now we have Area Four, which we get half our water from. The usefulness of this resource depends upon the quality and quantity of available water. These factors are interdependent and dependent upon rainfall, soil permeability, water table level, topographical variables, vegetation. If you remove the vegetation, it impacts the water quality and quantity. I mean, there's science that back that up. Our consultant, Barnes Ferlin, has said that. And not only whenever you do that, as Barnes Ferlin said in their report on Brookshire, you lose at least fifty percent of the water rainfall to evaporation. So if you don't have a close by where you have recharge, and I gain nothing from bringing these things up other than I know this, assuming it's the same, and it may not be today, the cost of water for the city of Titusville from our local water resource, the cost of getting that water to the citizens is less than buying it from Area Four. So whenever we're reducing the aquifer, impacting it, you're costing people money. That bore out true whenever they way back when built Astronaut High School. They lowered the hills and flattened it out. It directly impacted the wells. And for some reason, either our city council or administration has either forgotten that or don't realize it, that what is being costing our citizens by permitting and allowing these things to occur. And I mean, it's a scientifically based fact as to what is happening with Brookshire. And what concerns me a little bit is this. An out-of-town property owner owned that tract of land, bought it in two thousand seventeen, paid one million dollars for it. I'm looking at the public records. Did a lot of engineering, got it approved, sold it for three-point-one million dollars to another out-of-town development. And look what is happening to that land. And somehow, either the city council or this administration needs to realize the impact they're having on the citizens, the current rate base and taxpayers of this city. And I don't mean to harp about it, but I was so involved in preparing these ordinances, which is the basis of them, and to see what has happened to there is disturbing. And would you agree with me?
I haven't reviewed the Brookshire and how they met code or did not meet code. All I know is that we need to have a clear path forward.
I agree with that.
Okay.
And I think, I agree with you. And I'm partly bringing these things up because we need to see where the path needs to go. You learn from your experiences. You learn from the past do's and don'ts. And I hope we can learn.
Mr. Chairman, yes, my next, or is Riley next on your?
You're next.
Okay. A couple of things. I would imagine all the members got this email from Kasey Nance today talking about, instead of limiting to development around the outside, we need to have something that says forty percent on the outside and sixty percent on the inside. I think that was an excellent decision by her to take that position. And I would add that the last meeting, I asked about the environmental study that was done regarding endangered species, in specific, the gopher tortoises. Eddie had sent me the email and the tracking for the gopher tortoises. And so I called the state about it because there was, it was not clear when they said it was void and complete. And that confused me. And I didn't get an answer at City Hall as to what that meant. The permit was void and complete. So I spent hours getting the right person in the state. You know, it's like those old things that, you know, one person you call and they transfer it to another person, and I was transferred all over the place until I talked to the right person. And they did relocate the gopher tortoises. And as far as he read, there were two gopher tortoise permits. And they relocated them one batch once and another batch another time. So that, I was relieved to hearing that. But this guy from the state told me, well, your city planning department ought to have it on record that that was done. So they could have saved you time. But I don't think they do. I think once the permit is issued, if it's void and complete, it's done, they've relocated the tortoises. But there's no way of communicating that to the city. And, you know, one general statement I would make is I think the council and the administration need to spend more time concerning these issues, the tree ordinance and the low-impact development, instead of spending three hundred thousand dollars to build a new city hall and talking about how they need to establish a government center. And I think Dwight and I were the only ones that were present when this city hall was dedicated in nineteen sixty-nine. I was thirteen years old. And I was here because my mother worked for Lemon and Megginson Architects. And she typed the specs to build this city hall on an IBM Selectra typewriter. And as I recall, that night, Clyde Pertle was mayor then, that they said you could go up, you could put another floor, possibly two, instead of tearing this down. And if you could imagine, the lobby of this, this building was a showcase in nineteen sixty-nine and throughout most of the seventies. And what they're doing now, this room did not look like this. It took on a completely different appearance. I think this city hall is a building of historical significance. And I'm tired of hearing it come up every single year and it's voted down, yet it comes up again. You know, that's what I mean about priorities. The priorities ought to be cleaning up the river, ought to be getting this tree protection ordinance, low-impact development, and being a city that shines. They were proud of showing. And that's my rant.
Member Riley?
I just had a brief question. It's probably more for Tree Ordinance one oh one level. But I went out to measure the trees in my own yard after coming to hearing some of what's been going on in here. And so I've got some beautiful oaks, just a little bit like the one you have in the picture. And one of the oaks, you know, it separates almost at the very bottom. So instead of having, if you go to breast height, it'd probably be like a hundred inches or something because, because the thing separates out. So my question is, do you just measure the largest trunk?
Certainly, if you measured that one at four and a half feet and you measured all of them at four and a half feet, it'd be like a hundred feet, a hundred inches.
Yeah.
But I just, my wife went online and she said that was the way you're supposed to measure it, out the furthest down. For a quad oak, for example.
The way that I'm familiar is measuring the largest stem and then I believe it's half of the diameter, yeah, half of the diameter, breast height of the other multi-trunk.
Okay, so you measure them individually with, with the big one and then plus half of every other one?
There's some mathematics involved. I'm trying to, trying to pull up an example.
Because you'd, you'd come up with some huge numbers if, if you were to measure the trees. And that's what live oaks do. They don't just go one up. They go here, here, all over the place. But I, I think it's an example of what somebody said here tonight, that there's such a variety of trees, you know, you can't really put them all in the same box. But the thing that they all seem to have in common, at least for me, is their extreme beauty. And the, the feeling that they give people that live in and among them and, and pass by them of tranquility, which is certainly something needed today, especially in the last year. And I also believe, though, if you go beyond the beauty, beyond our motto of gateway to nature and space, I, I believe there's economic value to trees. I really do. And I believe that when they cold, when they clearcut the Brookshire place, they, they really did a disadvantage to themselves and their potential buyers. Because I cannot imagine anybody wanting to buy something there that has no trees, no bushes, maybe a few small things brought in. Pardon me?
Grape myrtles.
Grape myrtles, whatever. But I, I can't imagine that if somebody had a choice between, you know, this and a clear-cut property, that they, they would pay more money for the, the property with the trees. And then the, all, all the other economic values, like one of the things that we got sent to us by email talked about tree canopies potentially intercepting fifteen to twenty percent of the rain so that the rain doesn't go into the Indian River and, and pollute it even further. So there's so many reasons to, to keep these trees and to promote, promote the growing of trees and especially along the Indian River. So-
Member Riley, to answer your question about measuring the trees. So in the situation where the trunk is split into two, at the four and a half feet diameter at breast height, you would measure it just below the lowest trunk. And then if there's multi-stems, so more than just a split, you'd measure it by, the size is determined by measuring all of the trunks and then adding the total diameter of the largest trunk and the, and adding, sorry, and then adding the total diameter of the largest trunk to one half the diameter of each additional trunk. So the largest trunk and then half of each of the additional trunk.
Okay, that, that answers that question. Thank you.
Member Rice?
Yeah, in light of what was said earlier, I think at five o'clock meeting, if everyone would turn to page nine of their agenda, I would appreciate it. would turn to page nine of their agenda, I would appreciate it. If everyone's there, it, it was the motion about accepting the Sierra Club percentages, and I would like to exercise my right to evoke a Rule 13 to bring this back to the floor.
Okay, we have a motion to invoke Rule 13, which is a motion to reconsider. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second. I can't, sorry.
Okay.
I don't think I can, right, sorry.
Yes, you can. I mean, we're on the tree, so, and you were serving in that capacity. So procedurally, what occurs if this motion is passed by a majority vote, then we would go back to the main motion, which was to accept the Sierra Club's percentage table. So that, first, there's a motion to reconsider, depending on the result of that vote would depend on whether we go back. So roll call vote, if you vote yes, you're voting in favor of reconsideration.
Just question?
Anyone have a procedural question?
Yeah, clarify, please.
Pardon?
I have a question.
Okay.
It's not a procedural question.
What's your question?
The question is, are we going to cover this information on June 16th, or we're making decisions tonight?
For procedural, this is somewhat a procedural point of order that I would like to have, take the opportunity to clarify. The reason that I would like to clarify is the, the motion to reconsider, or Rule 13 as it's known in Titusville, is something that can be brought up at the subsequent meeting, and that's where we're at. And so Member Rice is taking advantage of the rule, which is only allowed to be taken advantage of at the subsequent meeting, by asking that this commission, the motion on this table is to whether or not you want to reconsider the previous vote. Now, to answer Member Porter's question, I think it would be appropriate to table that discussion to the time certain that was previously determined, June 16th. So that would allow this commission to pick that item back up at that time. So if a motion to reconsider is approved by the, the meeting tonight, then that would be something that hasn't been decided yet, is the operation of the procedure. But first, you have to decide whether the commission wants to reconsider it. If there's no majority in favor, then the previous motion would live on forever until brought up again and then voted on as a separate item for discussion, but the opportunity to reconsider is here and now only.
And looking at my lights that are on, Member Riley, do you have?
Mine's on.
Okay, currently, lights on, Member Rice?
Yeah, let me explain, since it's been second, because I was elected to, well, not elected, but given the opportunity to change my mind on something when it was thrown in my face tonight. So this is the only mechanism, I don't expect the ordinance, or the motion to change, I'm not requesting the motion to change, I just want to change my vote, because I don't want to throw them back in my face every time that I'm here. And that, that's the only reason why I'm bringing it up under Rule 13. Okay?
Okay, I just want to make sure, even, even if the vote is not approved, Mr. Rice's comment is a part of the record, okay, Mr. Rice? Even if it's not approved, okay? Member Richard?
No.
Roll call.
Member Rice?
Yes.
Secretary Richardson?
No.
Member Childs?
No.
Member Grant?
No.
Vice Chairman Spideau?
No.
Member Porter?
Yes.
Chairman Severs?
No. But for the record, Mr. Rice indicated his reason why he wanted to reconsider. So there's no other procedural aspects to that. Anything else? Again, we're talking about the follow-up on the tree, realizing we are major meeting. Member Rice, your light's still on?
Yeah, it's on because I'm disappointed that the, my fellow commissioners wouldn't afford me the right to change my mind on something, and I really don't expect commissioners to throw stuff back in my face on every meeting. If I do more research and prepare myself for a meeting that disagreed with maybe something I said, or something I voted on in an earlier meeting, I think it's unfair, as a newest member, when you guys have seen a tree ordinance several times, I've only seen it for the last month, not to give me the opportunity to, to change my mind. So I'm, I'm just disappointed, but thank you, I understand the vote, and I accept the vote.
Okay, Member Richardson?
You know, if you interpret it as thrown in your face, you know, I apologize, but you, you asked us to adopt, to consider changes that we'd already said by vote took place. And I think we should go on with the, the tree ordinance, but understand that we've had six different versions of that in the last year and a half, or two years.
Member Rice?
Yes. First of all, it was an emotion to accept my changes, it was nothing different than sharing my comments with this commission to help expedite an ordinance that's been a struggle for all of us to get through, okay? I didn't make a motion to change that table at all. My motion was on Section 30-33, had nothing to do with that table, okay, that I made. So, so it wasn't up for a vote, it wasn't for anything, but it was thrown back in my face. In fact, after our discussion, you came back to the minutes to point out your correction, just to sort of jabbed in my back.
Okay, gentlemen, as the chair's prerogative, I'm intervening at this stage, I'm ready to move on. Everybody's comments are available to the council to know your ultimate position on various sections of this tree ordinance, and we all may change our mind or may not change our mind on how this is ultimately going to shift out, I have no clue at this stage. The next item is petition to request from the public. Do we have any petitions or requests from the public?
No, sir.
Okay, council summary, I think it speaks for itself. City staff, do you have any items?
Sorry, Chairman, I just wanted to ask if you don't mind if the commission would provide a motion to table the tree ordinance, I didn't hear that specifically earlier, and so I just wanted to make sure.
To June 16th as a motion item.
Okay, do we have a motion? I thought we did that, maybe we did.
I don't think we stated.
Okay, we just set a meeting date for it. Do we have a motion to table the tree ordinance to June 16th? Second?
Six.
Member Porter, second to that? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, it passes. An additional staff report? City attorney?
I don't have a report, but just also to confirm, we're going to put the strategic planning ordinance on June 2nd as that agenda, and if you want to table that at that time, you can do so.
Okay. All right, I have no report. Any members have a report? Many members have a report? Okay, the meeting is adjourned.